I'm going to wait about a minute or two to make sure everyone was able to pop over from the other meeting before we get started.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Joanne.
Danielle, Dave and I are the only ones on right now. You're muted.
No, this is Jim, I'm on.
Okay, Jim, good, thank you, thank you. We're waiting for Matt and Evelyn. Matt or Evelyn, are you on? And I'm just not seeing you? I'm just texting him. Danielle, he's having troubles getting... It's not on his calendar for some reason, he said. Matt, can you send him the link again, please?
Wow, being unmuted helps. I guess I should for Councilwoman Bryant Ward as well. Okay, invitations sent.
Hey, thanks.
There you go, there you go, that's okay. And I'm sure that Evelyn's having the same challenges.
It does make it a challenge when you're toggling through three different meetings. I tried to separate them by time, but it's still is a challenge, I'm sure.
And I don't have her cellphone number, so I can't text her with that to let her know.
I do, I can text her.
Oh, I think she's on now. Evelyn, are you on?
I'm here.
Okay, fantastic. All right, we're all here. I'd like to officially call this meeting to order at 6:05 PM. If you all would please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much, and thank you for your patience. All right. First item on the agenda is the introduction of Melwood Horticultural Training Center. And do I have the presenters here?
Yes, this is Scott Gibson. I'm the Chief Strategy Officer for Melwood. Unfortunately, Ms. Cal had an emergency, and I'll be stepping in. She's very sorry that she wasn't able to make it and hopes to host you all at our nearby recreation center sometime in the near future, but I can run us through the presentation.
Fantastic, thank you.
Is it possible for me to get access to share the screen?
Yes, you can have access. Let me see. You should be able to present. Are you able to share? Here, I'll exit my screen, share.
It's still saying only organizers and presenters can share.
All right, let me check my settings.
Well, while we get that situated, I'd love to just have the team of colleagues I've got with me introduce themselves. I'm starting with Rebecca Cherokee, our Chief Program Officer. Rebecca?
Hello, everybody. I am Rebecca Cherokee, Chief Program Officer. Been with Melwood for seven years and Charles County resident.
I'm Jewelin Cosgrove. I'm Jewelin Cosgrove. I'm our Vice President of Government Relations. I've been with Melwood about four months now, but very excited to have been joining this team and excited to be with you tonight.
Good evening. I am Marquesa Whittington, and I am with Melwood's External Affairs Department. I have been a proud member of Melwood's team for 34 years, and I'm also a proud Charles County resident.
And hopefully, you can now see the slideshow. Is it presenting the right way?
Yeah, it appears to.
Right. So, just a quick history for Melwood. We started in 1963 when a group of parents with adult children with intellectual and developmental disabilities were committed that there must be a better option other than institutional care for their children who were aging out of school-based supports. So, with some surplus federal land donated, it was excess from Andrews Air Force Base. We formed the Melwood Agricultural Training Center, and we taught agriculture and plant care as a means of teaching those young adults how to support themselves and careers. Today, more than 55 years later, we're serving more than 2,500 people in the region. We're doing a lot of this through operating a social enterprise that employs more than 1,000 people with disabilities. The social enterprise offers everything from facility services, including custodial services and landscaping, to also administrative support services at sites like NASA Goddard Space Flight Center, as well as now staffing for tech and tech-adjacent careers with clients such as MITRE, KPMG, and GDIT. We are also serving over 5,500 injured veterans every year with our Operation Tahitu Healing Retreats, which take place at the Melwood Recreation Center, and 500 children a year with Camp Accomplish, our fully-inclusive summer camp program that serves both children with and without disabilities. Both of the retreat and the camp take place at nearby Nantjamooy, Maryland, at the Melwood Recreation Center on Ironsides Road. As I said, for more than 58 years, we've been a leading voice for social change. We're now one of the largest nonprofits in the region. We're also one of the largest nonprofit employers of people with disabilities in the entire country. We're focused on building a world where people with disabilities are fully included, and you see that in our program lines. Not only do we help people launch careers, but we help people live within their community. We serve several people in Charles County with community supports, where we help them engage in just the activities of daily living and that everyday interface with their community. We're spread throughout the DMV. I shared that we have over 60 contract locations, most of which are in DC, but they're also in Maryland and Virginia. And we have two campuses in Charles County where our programs are based out of. We have our campus on Country Lane in Waldorf, and then we have our recreation center that's 108-acre facility in Nantjamooy, Maryland. As I mentioned, we serve people in both DC, Maryland, and Virginia. We are heavily focused on serving people in Maryland, where we serve close to 1,000 people each year, and we support 1,100 people in work. Melwood, as an employer, is one of the largest employers in the region. We're paying about $37 million a year in wages to residents of Maryland, and they're paying a collective $2.2 million in taxes. About 11% of our workforce resides right in Charles County, and they're earning just under $4 million in wages. We calculated a few years ago with an economic study that as a result of the wages and taxes paid by Melwood and its employees within Charles County, the county is receiving approximately $1.5 million in induced economic output, along with the 31 non-Melwood-induced jobs. Back to that social enterprise and the services we offer, the federal government and commercial clients. We offer custodial services, call center services, embroidery, and then you see we're merging into these tech and tech-adjacent roles with records management, charity, card donations, and call centers, mailing and administrative services, and launching careers now in IT and cybersecurity. You may have read recently that our Bill IT program graduates have started working for the National Geospatial Intelligence Agency, where they're at the front line of the nation's cybersecurity defense. On the programming side, we're focused heavily on job training, placement, and retention. Again, we offer a lot of support particularly for Charles County residents on independent living and community integration, so we help somebody interact with their community on the terms that they choose, but also inclusive recreational activities. This is really important at the Melwood Recreation Center. That's at the heart of the programming that's occurring there. It's very important for children, particularly children with disabilities, to have an event or to have a program that is fun, but that also builds self-esteem and allows them to engage in what we would call "challenge by choice", to really push their limits, push their comfort, and see what they're able to accomplish and grow. Operation Tahitu, there's healing retreats for injured veterans started in 2014, again hosted at the Melwood Recreation Center. This programming sits alongside the traditional medical model for somebody who is suffering with post-traumatic stress or moral injury. And we've developed a particular expertise for helping military survivors of military sexual trauma. And we're very proud of the healing work that we do here. These retreats are offered to participants free of charge because they are entirely supported by public funding or philanthropy. We have had to pause Operation Tahitu, or at least the in-person delivery of Operation Tahitu because of COVID, but we're very excited that that is facilitating a shift to hybrid programming in the fall of this year. So, what will happen is instead of Operation Tahitu being a week-long program, it will actually have pre-recreation center online programming to prepare the person. It'll culminate with a week of in-person programming at the recreation center, and then we'll have follow-on, online, and distance-supported programming to really help them along that journey longer. Rebecca, I want to pause here for a moment and ask if there's anything you want to add about Operation Tahitu and the switch to the hybrid model.
No, I think like every other program, to go virtual, it allows us to tap into more needs. People who are specifically for Charles County in the rural areas, that they cannot come, but we can go to them. So, that's a highlight or a better point for COVID-19 this past year.
It's definitely a program improvement that came out of what was a very essential pivot. One of our newest programs that we're incredibly excited about is a Bill IT. With the Bill IT, we're coupling our 55-plus years of experience, offering professional and personal development training with technical training to help the individual earn an IT certification. We're confident our graduates leave this 14-week program not only with increased confidence and know-how, the ability to sell themselves, but an industry-respected certification, because they're not earning a Melwood certification, they're earning a Competea certification, really showing the world that they are quite capable in the field of IT. We're seeing tremendous success here. We have had graduates land careers at MITRE as data analysts, at GDIT as security operations center analysts, now with the federal government, with KPMG as quality assurance testers on a federal cloud program. This program started in Arlington, Virginia. In its second evolution, we expanded it into Prince George's County, Maryland, and we're looking forward to hopefully soon expanding it into Charles County, Maryland, so it can support not only the military presence, but any private employer who has IT entry-level tech and tech-adjacent work. Just again, I know I rattled off a few of the names, but this program has attracted a lot of interest from really blue-chip employers, large organizations in the space. And we're sure that it'll soon become a great pipeline for tech talent in Charles County as well. We really appreciate the opportunity to have meetings like this where we can interact with the community because we can't change what we're not aware of. And so, one of the things that we would really like to gather and feedback from you all today is if there are unmet needs that you think we can meet. We're very committed to being good corporate neighbors. We think our work is very meaningful, but we think the best way to make our work meaningful in the future is to have touchpoint meetings like this where we can get feedback from the community we're intending to serve. And so, with that, I'd just really like to open it up to any questions you might have about Melwood or its programming that my colleagues and I can answer for you.
Thank you so much, and you did awesome as being the stand-in there, so fantastic. I know the great work that Melwood does, and I really appreciate giving second chances or giving chances. I have two special-needs adult niece and nephew, and I know a program like this is so beneficial for those with disabilities, and so appreciate that. I know you do great work in our community. I don't have any questions, but I will open it up to our council to see if they have any questions or comments for you guys. Is there anyone who would like to speak this evening? Dave?
Just a brief comment. Again, thank you for reaching out. I know a gentleman who was involved with Operation, I'm going to mispronounce the name, Tahitu, and so I kind of lost track of it, and so I was really, really glad to see that that's going to come back. I know he had volunteered for this several years ago. I'm not sure he's still engaged, but my point is it's a great program. Being a veteran myself, I understand, and so I really appreciate that service, and I'm really heartened to hear that's going to start up again. Thank you very much for that.
We're very excited that it's starting up, and even more excited that we think that COVID has caused it to start up even stronger. I think it'll be an even better program now that it has pre-retreat work and post-retreat work.
Thank you.
All right, any other council members?
Madam Mayor, this is a woman.
Go ahead, Evelyn.
Yeah, I didn't have a question. I am familiar with Melwood. I just wanted to thank you for the work that you do. So, I do echo your sentiments that you're doing great work in the community, touching lives in a meaningful way. And so, I certainly am glad that you were able to present tonight.
Thank you. Matt?
Yes, thank you all for coming. I don't think there's anybody that's unfamiliar with Melwood in our area. So, I do appreciate you taking the time to come tonight. I did have, does a question, help me understand Charles County's role with Melwood and how you all are helping Charles County residents. I know you gave us numbers as to the money that are being paid to workers, but how many employees do you have through Charles County that are being employed through Melwood, do you know?
How many Charles County residents do we have working at Melwood?
Yes. Or, I think you said you...
210.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
210 employees as of our 2017 Economic Impact Report reside in Charles County.
That's great. That's great. And your guys' home base is, is it Prince George's? Do I know?
Yes, it's in Upper Marlboro.
Okay. All right, and I hope you'll leave all of your all's contact information, you know, so that we can reach out if there's anything that we can do to help you along the way.
Absolutely. And I just want to add, one of the things that we're committed to, being a neighbor to La Plata and to Charles County, is our recreation center is an amazing facility that can be used for multiple purposes, whether it's team building, or a retreat, or staff development. It is full of amenities, including high ropes courses and equestrian programming. We would love to make that available to the town. If it helps for, you know, recreational programming or even just staff and team building for town employees, please feel free to reach out. We're probably the best amenity in your backyard that people rarely use, and we would love to change that. We've got some downtime, that if we can meaningfully help our neighbors, we would like to use it to do so.
And the downtown, I should mention, is after August. We have Camp Accomplish starting on Monday. I'm excited about that. It ends till the end of August, so from September. And we have downtown during a weekend, as Scott mentioned, so you are welcome to let us know what you need, and we'll be happy to work with you.
I have been down to your facility there, and it's gorgeous. So, I have been down there a couple times. Jim, do you have anything that you would like to ask or say? You're muted. The phrase of 2020 and 2021, right?
This is Bobby. I could, I just wanted to point out, and I would point out for the Melwood folks, the town has an ongoing contract with Melwood, as you may be aware. We, you all currently cut quite a few sites for us here in La Plata, and we have had a contract with Melwood for 14 years almost now, and it has worked extremely well. Everyone has worked very, very hard. We also, for a number of years, actually, some of our sanitation workers, we employed them at our facility and would love to continue to be able to do that. It was rather hard when COVID came along to be able to continue that. But I would say that on the other side of that, we'd be more than happy. Lamont Key was one of your employees, had worked for us for many years. We'd love to have Lamont back at some point. If we could work that out, that would be wonderful. But we have had a very special relationship with Melwood. I actually have known Melwood. I grew up in Upper Marlboro and remember the years that it was up on 301 and knew Earl, you know, well, when Earl was running everything. But I really got to know Melwood when I was the Vice President of Operations at the University of Maryland and working with Consolidated Engineering and your partnership with Consolidated Engineering. We did a lot with Melwood up there, so when I came back to La Plata, I certainly wanted, and that's when the relationship down here started. So, I will say that we do have a very, very special relationship with Melwood. We would like to grow that relationship where it makes sense for you all and where it makes sense for us. And I think there's a lot of opportunities for us to continue to grow that relationship, and it has been, you know, very, very good. You know, we've clearly worked with Marilyn and, you know, her and Kelly and her crews for many years now. They do a great job for us. It has worked very, very well. And as I say, we've had a lot of the Melwood employees, where we actually, they come, they wear Town of La Plata uniforms. And, you know, in a lot of cases, you know, I've had a lot of people say, "Who's the Melwood employee?" Because they don't really know, and that's a wonderful thing, is that it's a fully-inclusive thing. They love being part of the Town of La Plata. Lamont especially always, you know, he loved having town uniforms and was so proud of that, and we liked that too. So, you know, anytime that you can think of additional ways that we can partner, as I had operations for that, we try to have a number of different spots where it's safe and, you know, very accessible jobs for people with handicaps. We're very, very happy to try and entertain that and to expand the relationship. So, I just wanted to say thank you very much for coming down, and for the council to hear this is wonderful because we do have a very special relationship and have had that for some time now with Melwood.
And we really appreciate the relationship. I appreciate your remarks. Our goal is really to accomplish social good by doing good business. We consider it a great mark of success when somebody sees Melwood and its social enterprises, whether it's custodial or landscaping, first as an excellent, excellent provider of service, and then they recognize that we're also accomplishing a social good because that's the best way for us to accomplish that inclusive world. So, I'm glad to hear that we're doing that in La Plata, and we appreciate the partnership and look forward to growing it, like you said, where it makes sense. So, thank you.
And I love the partnership, not only with the Town of La Plata, but the partners that you have that are working with the Melwood residents there. So, thank you for that. It's much appreciated, and I hope we do continue the strong relationship that we have with you guys. And it's a two-way street, so you need something you ask. Careful you open that door. If you say we need anything, because, oh yeah, I'm always asking, so. But I really appreciate you guys taking the time out of your Tuesday evening to come down here and introduce yourself and tell us about Melwood and the great work that you're doing, and I hope that we can continue with our relationship.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for having us.
You guys have a safe evening. All right, that brings us to our next item on our agenda, which is the Board and Commission Roster Vacancies and Term Expirations. Is that you, Danielle?
Yes, it is. Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, as you can see by the attached Board and Committees roster, we do have several appointments that need to be made or reappointments. We do have some vacancies with some, due to some town council elected officials not serving on their prospective boards any longer. So, the purpose of this discussion tonight is just to bring awareness to those pending appointments. I'm happy to schedule those appointments upon the direction of the Town Council, as well as if you have suggestions on recruitment or if you have members of the community that would be a good fit to apply for those vacant positions. Other than that, I really don't have any more to add. However, I am happy to answer some questions and also to offer that if anyone in the community has specific questions about a particular board or commission, have them reach out. I'm happy to share, you know, some knowledge of kind of the time commitment, what these various boards and commissions do, and what kind of experience may benefit each. So, please point people in my direction, and I'm happy to be the town cheerleader to get people to apply.
Danielle, I have a couple questions, actually. It made me go digging into this. You know, sometimes we take for granted, for the last four years, you know, everything was moving very smoothly, and of course, you have vacancies here and there. And if this is not the time or place, you can give me that look, and I'll know. But just kind of looking, kind of looking at the boards that we have, and we've been kind of, we've gone through this once before, but it seems that there may be some inconsistencies with the different boards, like Design Review Board and Historic Preservation Commission is seven members and an alternate. DRB, the council member can vote. HPC, the council member can't vote. And then there are no more than two of those that can be from outside the incorporated town limits. Planning is five members, one of them being a council and an alternate, and there's no residency requirement. Beautification, five members, one being the council, and there's no alternate. And then Parks and Rec, no residency requirements, no alternate, and five members and a council, with one of them being council member. With that said, is there, is there a need to kind of tighten it up a little bit so it's consistent across the board? across the board? Because seven council members, and then with HPC, for some reason, the council member doesn't have a vote, getting a majority is a little more challenging than five. You know, five, you need three, seven, you need four, and then some have alternates, some don't. Is that something that we can look at? Or is that just mirroring, mirroring something in the state?
Actually, I mean, it would be very helpful to be consistent. However, when you start looking at the purposes of some of these boards and commissions, they are different. For example, the Design Review Board has specific requirements for that composition that includes, you know, professional certifications, business owners, residents, so there is that makeup. As we go through and work on our code, and I'm hoping that in the near future, we're able to really comprehensively do that. It would be good for us to look at each as we go through to try to bring them closer in line. And as far as the Town Council, a lot of times in their role on these boards and commissions, the definition of an ex officio is really someone who would not vote on a matter. However, it's not clearly defined or spelled out in our code. You take the Planning Commission, for example, that was first developed in the 60s. There was no residency requirement to leave it open to those professional people to be able to serve on that commission. So, it is definitely something that I would be interested for us to all work together to look at. If any of you, as you are working with your various boards and commissions, notice something glaring that, you know, should be addressed in some way, please just pass it along. We can see what we can do. You know, unfortunately, like with so many things, we want to, this is one more thing that would be nice to handle, but it's also, you know, more to do in already full day.
That is so true. I appreciate you putting our eyes on this and I really charge our council members who are sitting on these different committees and commissions to reach out to see if they can, if they can recommend someone to fill a spot on one of the boards, commissions, or committees that they sit on. Dave or Matt? Oh, go ahead, Danielle.
I just wanted to point out that, and I'm sure some of you, most of you, all of you may be aware of this, that generally how it works is the Town Council person that sits on each board and commission, along with the Chair of that board or commission, generally does an interview, schedules an interview for an applicant, and then makes recommendation on appointment. So, as you, you know, come across those applicants, feel free to let them know and again, encourage them to reach out to me if they have any questions.
Great. Does council have any questions specifically for Danielle?
Mayor James, just a quick update. As you're all aware, I'm on the Parks and Recreation Commission, and I know we have two terms that are expiring or have expired. And I took the liberty of reaching out to both members over the weekend, and the chairperson asked, or she agreed to stay on as chair. And then the other person, Mary Winkle, I have not been able to contact her yet, but I have reached out to ask them to stay on.
Fantastic. Thank you for that. So, Danielle, and I love, first of all, I love that you guys are putting recommendations on what we should do because this makes our, it makes, for me at least, my job a whole lot easier. I do think that constantly putting it into the town notes and advertising it on Facebook and through our email that we need volunteers is a great way to go and letting people know. But those in the community, we're all out in the community. And especially when people have some suggestions that, ways that the town could be run, they may be better served in addition to offering suggestions by serving on a board. So, they actually feel like they are making a difference in the town. So, I will continue to try to recruit and encourage our community to get involved. But this helps us with eyes put on there so we know which committees are there. Brent, yes?
Yeah, I had to step away briefly, so I hope I'm not repeating something that was asked previously. But, you know, the newsletter, I know Danielle, I know Michelle is working on that currently. If Michelle's on the call, could she, I guess, confirm that it is? And I guess my question would be, is how prominently is it featured in the newsletter? Are we talking front page or are we burying it in page five or six?
It is in the newsletter because Danielle prepared an article. I don't lay out the newsletter. It can be moved to the front page. Once I get the draft back, I can ask them to move things around. They put things in the newsletter as they'll fit.
Sort of type setting, if you will. So, maybe that's the thing. Maybe we try to have it more prominently featured within the newsletter because in this day and age, a lot of people don't make it to the fifth or sixth page.
Yeah, I should be getting the draft back any day now, so I can move it around.
The, probably the most successful campaign to encourage applications is just personal contact. What I have found over the years, I've been doing this for quite a while, is that, you know, sometimes people need to be invited, which, and they turn out to be phenomenal members. But, I mean, I know that all of your communications and contacts in the community is most likely you'll come across those applicants for these vacancies.
Yeah, and I will continue to try to recruit members for the various boards as well. But thank you for, again, thank you for letting us see what there are. I love that our next one is a recommendation for appointments. So, look how effective you have been already. Do you want to go into that one?
That one, I will have Councilwoman Bryant Ward talk about that recommendation.
Fantastic.
Thank you, Danielle. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, Chairman Gayhan and I had an opportunity to interview a candidate, Tracy Johnson from AgroCopia. Just a phenomenal interview it was. Her interest and her desire to serve her community was, you could just feel it all through her, the interview. She's a government worker, but definitely said that she would be able to commit the time. She wants to commit the time. So, she would definitely be able to attend all meetings. So, we're certainly looking forward to bringing her forward for approval on the 22nd.
Fantastic. And that's great that you were able to interview her and get that feeling of commitment to the town. So, thank you. I look forward to seeing that. Does council have any questions for Evelyn on this candidate?
Thanks for doing that.
All right. Okay, guys. You see, she's already done one. Now we've got three other. Lead by example. There you go.
Must say that Ms. Johnson, her application was pending a vacancy. So, she was already in the system and had volunteered, but there was no vacancy. So, we lucked out on that one.
Don't take that away from Evelyn. We're giving it all to Evelyn.
I'm certainly not trying to own it, but I am thankful that Danielle was able to bring her forward and she was still interested. So, she was, she was really a good, a good interviewer, a good applicant.
Fantastic. Thank you. Okay, if there's nothing else on that, again, just keep on reaching out to our great residents and to see if anyone else is willing to serve on our communities, boards, and commissions. 2018 ICC update, Janine Harrington.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, the, tonight, we're just bringing to your attention the fact that we are looking to update our building code. It is way past time that we do this. We are still under the 2012 International Building Code, and we are looking to update to the 2018. Charles County is currently under 2018, and the Town of Indianhead just moved to 2018 as well. And I have to say, and you will see, there are still some typos in the documents. It is still going through legal review right now. We are still having Plan Check, our third-party permit reviewer, taking a look at it to make sure that all of the references line up. Because the Town of Indianhead went from 2006 to 2018, and we're going from 2012 to 2018. So, there are still several things that need to be ironed out. I do apologize for any typos. We are still actively working through this, but I really would like to keep this moving forward, which is why it was kind of pushed onto the agenda tonight, just to bring it to your attention, get the conversation started. We are actively working with the Town Attorney who just kind of completed his review, so we'll be getting back with him to make any edits that you know, may need to happen. And Plan Check is also finishing up their review. So, I'm confident that we can continue forward with this. And the idea at this point is to bring it for introduction at the business meeting on the 22nd for adoption on July 13th. Now, you know, like I said, pending any legal review or any major issues that we run into, that is the course of action that I would really like to take. I was hoping to have this done to line up with our new fee schedule, to make it an easy transition for any of the contractors and developers that are currently working in the town. New fee schedule, new building code, kind of to start fresh. So, from there, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have or any concerns that you may have moving forward on this.
Janine, I do have a question. When we took office, I guess, the previous council in 2017, I believe you were still under the 2009, maybe the, maybe the 12. You had gotten the 12. And I was told at the time, and I was trying to get to the 18 when we got to the 18, that there were so many changes and they haven't adopted them. And this is not my world, so I have no idea. I mean, they could have told me a whole big story and I would have believed it. Is there any, so we're going to 2012, skipping 2015 and going to 2018. Any ramifications that will come from that? I mean, what are we missing? And do we adopt what went on to 15? Or I don't understand that. Can you just explain that to me, please?
So, I definitely, you know, building code and building construction is something that I obviously am in charge of as part of the Planning Department. It is not my area of expertise, which is one of the reasons why I wanted to rehire a manager of inspections to help look after that side of the Planning Department. I do my best to research and I heavily rely on Plan Check to inform me on what the differences are, what their concerns are. So, what I've basically been told from Plan Check was that 2015, you know, really there wasn't any many changes that would have made much of a difference. 2018 is a good, happy medium. There will be a few changes that, you know, we'll need to make sure that the developers and construction, or the contractors are aware of. But there's nothing that's earth-shattering. And I actually think that it's better than the 2012, especially from what Plan Check has told me, that they've made several improvements to actually make things better on the developers and contractors, as well as making things a little bit more safe. So, I don't have any concerns on going from 2012 directly to 2018. The concern I know was raised to the, because they did already pull out the 2021 building code, and I believe Charles County will be going to the 2021 code here in the very near future. But Plan Check has taken a look at the 2021 code and they said, don't do it. They said, don't do it. So, there's, I guess it's at the discretion of the counties and the municipalities as to which building code they want to follow. And the ICC doesn't really say, you know, oh, well, 2006, you know, you absolutely have to upgrade now. It's really at the discretion of the municipality. So, I definitely rely on Plan Check for their guidance on this. They have gone through and made exceptions, and I have to show a big thank you out to the Town of Indianhead and for our Town Attorney, because they basically just handed me their building codes, which they had already updated and were already in ordinance form, which made it so much easier and will make it much easier with these last few edits that we need to make. So, I really have to thank them for saving me a lot of time and trouble on going through those. But no, I don't think that there's anything earth-shattering in this update. It's minor things, you know, talking about, you know, basements and, you know, in the 2012 code, you have to have an actual, you know, window to this, and you have to have a certain number of feet to an exit. And they just kind of tweak things a little bit to make them more safe. And that's how it's been explained to me by Plan Check.
Fantastic. Thank you. Dave, do you have a question?
Yes, please. A comment and then a question. Director Harrington, thanks for doing this. I know this, you have nothing else to do than do building code. So, thank you for bringing this forward. Just a generalized question. You mentioned that this is, the new, the 2018 will make things safer. And so, it's good that obviously Plan Check is looking at this, but, and maybe the attorney will bring this out. Does this, or does this affect projects? Well, I mean, rephrase that. So, assuming it's adopted July 13th or whatever date you mentioned, what is the impact on projects currently under review? Or is there something, a transition period?
Absolutely. So, when, any projects or any building permits that are currently in the system and under review under the 2012 code will finish out the review under the 2012 code. Anything that is submitted on or after the effective date, so I know we adopted, and I think that there's still a few days before it becomes effective. So, on the effective date, that is when we would let everyone know that any new submissions are being done under the 2018 code. And that's why I wanted to make sure that we kind of announce this now. And then we are going to be able to put this out on social media. We'll be able to do out press releases and make sure that everyone is fully aware that, hey, as of July 13th, you need to start preparing to do the 2018 code. Everybody already kind of does the 2018 code anyway. And we have to remind them that we're still under the 2012. So, I really don't think it's going to be a hard transition, and I actually think it's going to make it much easier. Because anyone that's doing business in Charles County is thinking, oh, well, it's 2018 code. And then they come here and they're like, what are you talking about, 2012? So, I don't think it's going to be difficult. I've already talked to a couple of the bigger developers that we're currently working with in Steeplechase and AgroCopia, and they are aware that the change is coming. I've made them aware of that, and they were kind of asking me those same kind of questions. So, anything that's in prior to that date will continue on its way with the 2012 code. Anything submitted after the date will be reviewed under the 2018 code.
Thank you for a great answer. Thank you.
Hi. Any other members of council have a question? Great. Well, thank you for your hard work. I know, as Dave said, that you have a lot more on your plate other than this, but it is refreshing to hear that we are going to be to the 2018 and that everyone has, you know, kind of checked that out and made sure that it is the best code for our developers and residents. So, thank you for that, and please let us know how council can continue to support you.
I think at this point, we just need a consensus if we are in agreement to bring this forward for introduction on the 22nd and then with the anticipated adoption date of July 13th.
All right, council. If you're in favor of moving forward with this, just let me know. I'll go, Councilman Goldsmith? I don't know if he's frozen or not. Councilman Challenger? Oh, there you go.
I am in favor of it, Mayor.
Good. Jim, I think I heard you. Did I hear you?
I am in favor to support it.
Great. Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'm in favor.
And Councilman Jenkins?
Yes, I am, assuming that, you know, there's no legal impediments and Plan Check has signed off on it. I assume that. Thank, yes.
Well, so now you put that out there and we're expecting everything to be flawless and we'll see it on there. I'm a yes as well. So, thank you so much for doing this and it's a great thing moving forward.
I promise if it's not ready, I'll let you know.
All right, that's good.
Thank you.
Okay, Town Council Rules of Procedures and Development. Our brains were so fried last week that we couldn't prove forward, so I'm hoping that only two hours of meeting right now. We're a little fresher, a little more caffeine and, Danielle, if you want to take that, take the reins of that one, that would be great.
Yes, I did not go in and make the, and it has a strange view this time. Yes, I did not go in and make the, and it has a strange view this time. But anyway, I did not go through and make some of the recommended revisions from last week. But we did agree that we would continue from, I believe we didn't finish adding items to the agenda in order of business, if I remember that correctly. So we can continue from that point and try to get through this. So we have a finalized document. We may have finished with adding items to the agenda. We had changed this to, instead of seven-day business days, it was five business days. Things like that. But I do believe we stopped in this section.
I think we stopped right at the end of distribution of agendas. We did not go into order of business, if I recall.
Yeah, let me, it helps if I'm sharing my screen.
Yeah, we started the discussion of adding and then we definitely lost steam.
I, I have to look at the recording to be sure.
Okay, I'm not quite sure what's going on there. Is everyone else hearing what I'm hearing?
And my, it's not.
Continue in English, press one.
All right, we see it now.
Okay.
Because we talked about the civic web and that was the distribution of the agenda. And the package, we talked about people wanting to come in and get it if they needed it and that it would be posted. So I think we stopped off at section five, order of business.
Okay, for this, I'm just looking for the, I mean, these are rules of procedure for the town council. So these items are at your discretion. I think one thing that we were, it was order of business. And consent agenda is one item. We currently don't operate under a consent agenda. Basically, those items, they would have to be determined as to what kind of moves forward with one motion. This would change how we currently do business. However, you know, it is again, at the discretion of the town council. I would be fine with it either way. However, sometimes items, I mean, it would make it where if you did not want to approve something under the consent agenda, let's say it's a purchasing resolution, you would have to approve a motion to remove it from the consent agenda. So it's, you know, there's the pros and cons with both. However, it seems to work fairly well how we run through the agenda now. Although if our agendas continue being so large as they have been, then this may be a good alternative.
Oh, you're planting that in their head. I, because I would have been the first to say that. You know what, I do. And since last week, I have been doing some research on things like we had talked about, Robert Rules of Order. And I do think that would, although it does offer us a lot of structure, it does kind of put us, make sure that we stay between lines, which sometimes we don't. So I don't, I would get myself probably in a peck full of trouble. So I like what we're doing now. And I don't, in my opinion, I don't think we need a consent of agenda to exercise that. I, I think that we all can get along and that, and if there is something that we don't want on the agenda, when we're voting for it, that's our vote. No, I mean, we're not going to move it forward. So in my opinion, and I would love to hear from council too, I don't think it's necessary to add that step for a consent of an agenda. I know certain organizations do say, "Here's the agenda. Do I have a motion and a second to accept the agenda as presented?" So it is my opinion, we don't need it. I will hear what council has to say. One way or another.
This is Councilwoman Bryant Ward. I don't think we need a consent agenda to approve the agenda. I think any agenda that is, that's presented, if we want to review it and remove items, we certainly can before adopting an agenda. We currently don't adopt our agenda at the beginning of our meeting. But I don't think we need a consent agenda to do that.
Thank you for that. I, I agree. Matt, Jim or Dave, anything else?
I just, I mean, I originally thought that perhaps we should, but now I just have some mixed feelings about it. So I'm not sure that we're ready to go there yet. So I'm fine if it's there and I'm fine if it's not there, frankly.
I like to keep things kind of flexible, rather than box myself into a set strict guidelines. So I think the way we're doing it now is fine for me.
Matt?
No problem with keeping it flexible. I like structure, but not to the point where we're having to have structure within structure endlessly. So if we're fine with the way we're doing it as far as what the topics are and how it's presented, then let's keep it.
And I like the fact that we can always change it should we need to. If we find that it's not working for us, it is something that we can adopt. So, okay. Is that clear enough, Danielle?
That's clear enough. So what I'm hearing is that section five dash two will be removed. I'll take a look to see if there's anything that needs to be strengthened in order of business to address removing consent agenda. But at this point, I think that the order of business pretty well matches our current code in how we do business. So we do have the public comment participation. I encourage you to, you know, provide comments on this. We've offered a public forum at each of our meetings work sessions and business meetings. On occasion, we offer that at special meetings, depending on what the special meeting is for. If it does include a, you know, an item that's under consideration. So this kind of reflects how we are currently handling the meetings with that participation. And there are times when the town council does have the public comment on items while they're being reviewed. So really, this is another discretionary item other than the three minutes that is written in code. And we, we did at one point work on an application to encourage people to apply, to speak during a meeting. Not to require it, but to encourage it so that we had their contact information and such. It is making it a little challenging during the virtual meetings to capture that contact information, should someone need to receive follow-up information. However, it's on the website, but it hasn't been advertised.
So Danielle, individuals may request a place on the agenda at least seven working day, or at least seven days before the meeting. We allow, just, I mean, what do they do if an individual wants to be on our agenda? They contact you. I know, like groups like Melwood contacted me. I forwarded it to you. But that is something that's always been in place?
Actually, there are a lot of instances where people have asked to be on the agenda. Other groups, this Melwood was really one of those times when someone had asked to be on the town council agenda. This definitely could use work. I don't recall why this section with addressing the council and asking the town manager was removed. I think that may have not translated very well to the copy that ended up on the agenda. However, that could use work and it may be an opportunity where either we have it here or keep it up in the agenda items area.
Yeah, because of course, we, we don't, I don't have any problems with people requesting to be on the agenda, but I think it's got to be a very consistent, who do they ask, how do they get on? Because as you well know, we have had maybe a problem or two in the past that people have not been on the agenda and have asked, and people who have asked instantly got on the agenda. So I think there needs to be consistency there. And if it could be funneled through one point of contact versus just, I don't know how it's been in the past, because we've been, you know, we do our day-to-day thing. And, and I know that I have asked to have somebody on the agenda and then I know you magically follow through and something happens. So I, I think that there needs to be a point of contact. And during the public comment, is that, you know, what justifies an individual being on a agenda versus something that is just a public comment for public comment? Because when our residents speak, they're not on the agenda. They fall under public comment.
One of the things that I was trying to address up in the agenda items section, adding items to the agenda was for that purpose. Past practice has been a constituent reaches out to someone on the council, the mayor, and basically, or staff for that matter, the town manager. And that person brings forward the question on the agenda, if the town council agrees by majority to schedule an item. If that's how this town council prefers to handle things, I would, I personally do not want to be the person that's making that decision for the town council. I think that, you know, that is really a town council decision. I can't speak for Brent, but I would imagine he wouldn't want to be the one to make that decision as well, unless it's actually a current business item before the town. So I think that, you know, in reality, it should be like brought to the town council for consensus on scheduling.
I agree. Oh, go ahead, Brent.
Yeah, Mayor James, Brent Manuel, Town Manager. You know, I think one of the things we, we're trying to move so quickly and a lot of organizations I've been with, it would be referred to the town council, as Danielle said, for a consensus and then be scheduled at a later date for consideration. So, you know, that may be a path for specific requests as they come to the town. Because, you know, if it's, if it's a request coming to the town council, you know, it's hard as an administrator to sort of create a path, if you will, other than if we have something established, which I think we're trying to do here that, say it may come, because a lot of localities have standing committees, which may be things such as water and sewer, human resources, policing, whatever it may be. And so if you had a request come in, it would come to the full council and then the council would potentially refer those items to a specific committee. Whereas here, we work under more of a work session type, I guess, structure. So it may be the fact that it comes to the council, council considers it and then refers it to a future work session or the next work session, you know, however it may play out.
I like that and we have to have the language for that. And the fact that D, I don't think that belongs under the public comment participation. I don't think it belongs there because it's the public comment, you know, the public forum area. I think that that would be better served, Brent, as you said, is to have language that it can come to the council and the council says, "Yeah, look, next month, we are good." And I think we kind of did that in the beginning, well, when you got here in 2018. Brent, I think that we sat down and we had the priorities and all of that. But this specifically is saying about a person that requests and, and we need to turn it around on there and see when we can schedule it in. I, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I think if you go back to D, Danielle, you see that it's, you know, when you look at the original intent, it was to give someone the opportunity to speak longer than three minutes is the only reason it was there. So it wasn't specifically to place an item on the agenda just during public comments. And, you know, it's not even, like some public comments, you know, I've seen localities that at the beginning of the meeting, they may have a public comments period on items on the agenda. And then later in the meeting, after the meeting is completed, maybe public comments on matters that were not on the agenda. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of different ways organizations sort of handle the public comments because they want the information. If anyone has something to say about an agenda item that you may be considering in that evening, they would like to hear that before the consideration. Whereas after the meeting is, or the meeting is pretty much at completion, a lot of times they'll have a another public comment period for items that are not on the agenda. And that may be where some people may bring up ideas that the council may want to refer.
Okay. Danielle, did you have something to add?
No, I mean, with this, I mean, if you look at the items added to the agenda, it is addressed in here and where the town council would reach consensus on to proceed with development, introduction, consideration of adoption where applicable. So there is that. And if you go, yeah, the public comment and participation. It, I mean, do you want to keep it as this relates to public comment participation? Or just revamp how the public comment period? Basically with this, yeah, if they, we could require seven days request notice to request longer time, if that works for the town council. That it's completely up to all of you.
Here's my thought on that, which I have a thought of. We have never shut anybody down after, you know, three minutes. Now, if they're going on and on and we're at 10 minutes, then we can exercise our right to say, you know, it's three minutes. But we have been the kinder, gentler, gentler kind of council and let people speak. And we don't have the big clock there and get people all nervous about seeing it tick down. And then there's a buzzer or it shuts off your mic. If it is something that they are passionate about and they want to talk more than three minutes, then it becomes an agenda item and it loops back up top, I would think. Because it's more than just a comment. It's requiring probably an action item. I personally would scrap D. Council? Anybody want to weigh in?
I agree.
I, I think it makes sense, Mayor, how you've discussed it as it relates to not, not really being part of the public comment section, but, but part of the adding items to the agenda section. I don't know if I'm fully on board with the second paragraph of the adding items to the agenda section. We kind of talked about that a little bit last time. But I do recognize Mr. Manuel and your, I think, need, I think is a good way of putting it, of letting the council know in advance what a community member may want to have on a work session, agenda, item. I mean, even if it's for the purpose of trying to resolve it without even the need of discussing it, right? I mean, giving us a little bit of time to investigate it is helpful. So I think, Danielle, when we're looking at section four two, I think everybody agrees, we want to generate involvement and not stifle it. But it's finding that balance of, okay, what's legitimate for an agenda item versus, you know, investigation and a work session. I guess that's where you're saying the consensus aspect of it would, would rule. But that's the same rule for, as it's written, for council members. Am I reading that incorrectly?
No, and this was just putting it in there. I mean, this section may warrant a third paragraph to separate those out. I didn't try to develop further how it's done for the town council. But I did try. But I did try to include the information on how it's done for like department heads and requests from the community. So if you think that that should be a different process, then, you know, I'm happy to make those changes, however you feel they need to be made.
I mean, as it stands now, they, they contact you or, or Mr. Manuel and say, hey, I want, I want this issue resolved. And then, then I guess what happens? You guys decide whether or not it's worthy and that's a tough spot for you guys to be in.
I'll let Brent speak to that one.
Yeah, I mean, it's, there's, there's no clear path. And that's, I think, what the problem has been in the past that and hopefully for this exercise, we will come out of a sort of a procedural position where we, we will know what we need to do and how we follow it. You know, then, then we follow it. If we don't follow it, then shame on us. Because council's given us direction. So I think that was some of the sort of working through and some of the growing pains was without having established and sort of the level and the complexity of business that's coming before the council, you know, trying to figure these things out. I think this is definitely a step in the right direction and it will serve us well into the future. But, you know, I don't know that there was a clear path prior. And Danielle, if you don't agree with that, I think that, you know, we tried to, you know, a lot of times it's like putting a puzzle together when I talk to Danielle about our, you know, how's the agenda shaping up for this month. And when I speak a month, I'm talking first work session, second work session and the business meeting. And a lot of the business meeting is based on what comes before the council and work sessions. So, you know, trying to balance out, you know, there are some months where we could probably get away with one work session. Of course, since you guys have been on council, that's probably not a good example. But sometimes, you know, I feel like, well, you know, we're spreading out stuff over two meetings to fill, to fill that time. But then another times, you know, like sort of recent months, it's, you know, we're pressed to try to get you guys out of here in four hours for the course of two meetings. So, you know, I think that we just need to, need to establish a path that we're comfortable with and then move from there.
I think with this, the, I'm sorry, the, the question really for me is, do you, would you like a separate process for how town council initiated agenda items are addressed? And those that are, you know, the department heads, community members and on down the line, I can certainly separate those out. Probably how this is written is appropriate for the department head and community members process. So what I would like is, you know, specific guidance on how you feel the council member initiated items are addressed.
I do like a separate paragraph on that. I think that that would make it very clean. And then it puts the onus on the council instead of this, the amazing team we have at town hall. And if something is, you may think is very important or not important in it, and it gets on or doesn't get on, it's, it falls back on you. And it shouldn't be that way. It should be the town council that makes that decision. So with that, I know that Brent Manuel is the wordsmith there. So I am sure he would love to take on that project and get a nice paragraph. But I am, I'm fine with whatever way that it puts the onus on us.
Yeah.
Does anybody else in, in looking at this, I don't want to be the only one, you know, squawking about, you know, the council bringing an agenda item to a work session or the business meeting. But, you know, Mr. Jenkins, Councilwoman Miss Bryant Ward, Mr. Goldsmith, do you all have any opinion as to how this is written or how as council, we should be able to add stuff? Because I'll, I mean, we'll do what works for everybody.
So this is Evelyn. So Madam Mayor, the thought that I had when we initially, when Councilman Challenger brought this forward is because we wanted to know how the council was to actually bring agenda items for discussion. I think we all had so many things we wanted to talk about and we needed to have a path forward in doing so. So I do think that there needs to be a section for the town council as well.
And what about if we just change the word and Danielle, you know, chime in on this. Instead of the town manager should prepare a proposed agenda to review with the mayor prior to the scheduled town council meeting to be, change that instead of mayor, town council. Could it be as easy as that? And that takes it away from just me having the review. And that kind of gives it, so all of us have the review. He brings it to us and say, okay. And that's kind of how we worked in the past, that here are the next items on the agenda for, for the next three council, the next three work sessions. What do you guys think? And where do you want to move that? That, that's kind of how we did it in the beginning and just take mayor out and put town council. Would it be as simple a fix as that?
Madam Mayor, would it be mayor and town council? Would you take mayor out? Would you make it mayor and town council?
Yeah, it'd be mayor and town council.
Yeah.
And I do believe from the previous, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Manuel. I, I don't think that addresses it because that's just for the review. I'm, you know, that's fine. I'm just saying as far as items added to, and I'm happy to, I'm happy that we're all held responsible for, for what we have to discuss. That's fine. We should be held accountable for that. But I was kind of more looking for some guidance in that second paragraph.
Well, I think it should be the same thing that you want, say you want to bring up something, whatever, A, B, C, that, that it should go to, kind of loops back to the town manager. And you, you say to the town manager, hey, I want to put on something about this. And then it is prepared for proposed agenda and it comes to mayor and town council. Does that?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It makes sense, but let's just play it out, right?
Okay.
So let's say Councilman Goldsmith brings an item. He wants to add it to the agenda. And I'm just looking at the other screen as far as reading it. So I'm not, you know. And two of us want to go forward with it? Two of us don't? Something in that matter? I mean, what's the process? I, I know there's one thing in here about consensus to proceed with development. So I'm curious, what is efficient? What works for Mr. Manuel? What works for you, Mayor? I think we're all reasonable people. Right? I mean, are we voting up, voting down, or just considering? You know what I mean?
If, if I may, there's some concern with the town council developing the agenda that could potentially create a meeting. Because you are making a decision, you're coming to consensus, you're discussing items outside of a meeting. So I think we're going to have to change how that's done. If it does go to a work session and that's how the items are decided for the next meeting, then that would be wonderful. It will delay the process somewhat. I think sometimes it's all good for us to take a little bit of time and, you know, move things along properly than rush them. I think that probably we'll have to address items that are, you know, of an immediate need. However, I think that probably would not necessarily be like a town council member specific item. I mean, maybe could be, but.
And you know, Danielle, when, when we're talking this out, I didn't even think about it being outside of a work session. And so I'm glad you have your eyes on that because I'm thinking council member or mayor brings up, say, hey, I want this on the agenda and what do you guys think? And, and it would be in a work session, you know, and I say, I want it on the second, the second Tuesday of August. Can we put it in there? And then that's, that was what was in my mind, not going outside saying, oh my gosh, we need to have this on the agenda. Here's your five business days beforehand. I'm thinking it's a work session to work session. Unless it is really a state of emergency. And then, then that's a whole nother ball of wax there. But that's kind of where I was thinking.
How about, and mind you on the, you know, right here, I'm not necessarily going to write it out. But I think we may be able to develop it where, let's say, once a month, you know, all of you were talking about the upcoming agenda items. It's not necessary. And in some cases, it could be Brent reporting, myself, any of the department heads reporting, saying what they have coming up. And I try to put those on the agenda when I know about them. But maybe it's a discussion of the town council, you know, I, hey, David has been talking with a constituent and they have something to address. And he lets all of you know in the meeting that this may be coming up in the form of a request to be on the agenda. That, that type of dynamic under upcoming agenda items, we already have that on each session agenda.
Yeah. And that was what I was going to get back to is the upcoming agenda items. And maybe it's something we turn into practice is that we try to in some sort of ways, schedule out our work sessions for the following month at our business meeting. Where we sort of say, this is what we have right now. Yeah. How would you guys like to, to proceed? And, you know, I don't want to say à la carte, but you could, you know, we can move things around if you, it's the will of the council. But that may be something to consider is that on our agenda at, at our business meeting, that we sort of look at laying out the work sessions for the following month.
Yeah, Councilman Jenkins, I mean, I, I like the idea of having a second paragraph for the council. But I really like the idea of having a discussion during a work session of potential future agenda items. A, it's public. And number two, it frankly gives us a chance to prepare if that's going to be some kind of agenda item. It also allows the staff to do any kind of research or background information that we'll need. So I, I like that idea.
Yeah, I do too.
So like with this one, I included, and I need to change the meeting type, but I actually had the, on the last agenda, and I forgot to do it here, to change this to just future meeting topics. Or it could be future agenda items. However, like here, I put the strategic planning that was not discussed the last time, just kind of as a placeholder. So we don't lose it. It helps me because there's so many items. And I'm sure that it helps everyone else because again, all of you are in the same, so many items. So.
Danielle, the, the chart that you had prior council that, and I think it was Brent, maybe Brent had it. But where you guys had, oh my gosh, what do we have 12, 15, 20 different topics we wanted to talk about? I really liked how it was, you guys prioritize, you know, put it down one through 20, where, where you see it on, on there. Or, you know, okay, out of these 20 guys, let's pick three to, to put on the August agenda, first work session. Here's pick three more to do the second work session. And I think it works again. The anomaly will be if there's a 911 that we have to get in and then we deal with it on that. But that way it gives the applicant or whoever is requesting time and to say, hey, we're going to put you on on August 15th. It gives us time, as Dave said, to do research and staff to do research. And it gives us something to, it gives a structure.
I agree with that. We did have all of the lists from, let's see, yeah, from 2017, we had, you know, all of the various things that were before the town. And then the town council ranked those items. I believe that's what you're referring to.
I am.
And we do still have that format of the upcoming agenda items. And the list was pretty much started from priorities of the town council. So we can certainly, you know, work with that again. I think that list that we have out there in SharePoint, I'll have to look and see if we can turn that into something that could be attached to the agenda or maybe have a section of that. And so that that way it can just kind of follow through with each meeting.
I agree with that.
We'll figure that. Brent and I'll talk about how, you know, hash it out on, you know, how best to support that moving forward.
So that's that, that's the item on SharePoint called Work in Progress?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think that's a great idea.
And I think we're all, oh, sorry, Danielle. I think we're all in agreement that we just need that third paragraph in there about, and I think wherever it says mayor, mayor and town council, we are a team. And I think that we, we can move forward with that.
Yeah. So, so we'll work on that. So this isn't going to, you know, obviously the, you can't approve it today because we don't know what it'll look like. However, yeah, if there's, let's go back down. I think the rest of the sections were fine. Participation, we're removing this. The, the public hearings. I kept it to what we have, our adopted public hearing procedures. They seem to work well. They provide ample opportunity for public comment. So if you have any input on, you know, possible changes to those, then I'm happy to accommodate. But this is a document that now has just been inserted here.
No, I, I agree with that because that is, that's in our code that for a public hearing, it spells out the specific require at least 15 days notice in a newspaper. So I am fine with it. I didn't see any problems.
Okay. Unless there are any more, any questions, so we'll move on to closed meetings. This has been updated to state law and the requirements. Tried to keep it simple because it is outlined in state law. We do have the citations and the statutory authority that we need to state, which this outlines all of that.
I think it's very clear. I didn't have any problem with that.
The question, when you move to quorum, of course, three members, it would constitute a quorum. Some of this, obviously, it was the sample language. And the, you know, action can only be taken with a majority favorable votes by the town council. I did remove from the sample, except for the levy of taxes. And we, we don't operate that way. We would have to codify something along those lines, not just put it in rules of procedure. I would believe town attorney may think differently, but can't imagine we could just put it in rules of procedure. And this, okay. Yeah. See, this particular sample came from Virginia. We do have conflict of interest shall be disclosed and may participate or act in accordance with chapter 20 ethics. There are specific provisions. If you would like for me to include that specific language, I can. I tend to shy away from that to give us the flexibility to change that chapter at some point and not miss changing it in another document.
I do think that we have to take. I do think that we have to take the initiative and, and be familiar with that. But I'm not necessarily pressed about having that language put into this document here. Because I know that you will tell us, yes, you have to recuse yourself once we recuse, or no, you don't. You'll keep us on track.
I'll try, but really with those, I, you know, that would be, if there's any question, then the Ethics Commission could provide an opinion on, you know, to a town council member on whether they should participate or not. But basically it's disclosed and you can participate if there is not a quorum to conduct business. So if you do disclose a conflict, however, you not being able to participate in a discussion if there's no quorum. So that discussion item cannot move forward. You can participate in that discussion. It's something along those lines. That's how it's written in chapter 20, our ethics code.
I have a bit of a problem with that. If you would have normally, and correct me, you know, when I go off, off on a tangent here, but if you would normally have to recuse yourself if there was a quorum because of whatever affiliation you have with this. And it's saying, if I'm reading this correctly, if there's no forum, then you can talk about it. I think that's duly, it's unduly influencing the other members. And if it comes up again where I'm just going to use myself, I have to recuse myself from it. I've already stated everything that I really shouldn't have stated if I was truly recusing myself. Brent, I see your hand raised. Do you have?
Yeah, most communities I've been involved with, if you have a conflict of interest, the presiding officer will ask them to leave the dais during that discussion. So that they cannot even influence a discussion with a facial expression, for example.
This is only, there's specific provisions in chapter 20, which has been reviewed and approved by the state. And the only time that person can participate in that discussion is if there is no quorum to decide. That's not mine. That's in our state ordinance.
So that would be to establish a quorum, Danielle, but then they wouldn't leave.
Yeah.
Is that correct? So if it were three members present, let's say, and it was up for discussion and they would be used to establish the quorum, but then they would be asked to leave the dais and then the
Oh, okay.
Two members could then continue to have a conversation and that would be considered a quorum? Is that correct or?
I don't think that's how it's written. I have these links for some reason are not working in here to go to my comment.
It seems like you would have to have three present.
Yeah.
To get into the discussion on the ethics ordinance. We can, you know, fix that if it needs to be fixed, but that's not in this document. It's just, this is, it just says the conflict, we have to be in compliance with our ethics ordinance. So that's why that's in here. So we either need to change that or clarify it. But this just addresses it since we had to remove the Virginia Conflict of Interest Act.
Evelyn, did you have something to say to that?
Yeah, I was just going to say that if, if the individual who is recusing themselves from the conversation, then that means there is no quorum. Because adding a person to a conversation that they shouldn't be having a conversation about creates a greater conflict of interest. So they should remove. So that agenda item, we probably wouldn't be able to move forward with business because we lack a quorum.
That's true. My only, my only concern is in reading this, it to me says, and I know Danielle, it's not you, I know it's state, that now that there's no quorum, because I'm going to say I had the conflict. But now that we don't have a, we didn't have an original form, it means that I can talk about it, which I
We're still getting to the discussion of the ethics ordinance, not this, if you want to. I, I'll have to open it up. I don't, I wasn't prepared for a whole discussion on the ethics ordinance at this time. I can certainly pull that up. You're more than welcome to look at that and we can have that. And if there are revisions that need to be made or it needs to be updated, then we can certainly add that to one of those upcoming meeting items.
Well, Danielle, as the Director of Legislative Services and our town clerk, if you feel that this is the right verbiage for that, that is fine. When this issue, hopefully it never has to come up on that. I think that we can refer to the ethics, you know, code of the portion of the town code. Because you're right, we can't argue with this.
Yes. How about if we just leave it, it does have to say conflict and yeah, so it has if instead of, so they shall be disclosed. And let's leave may participate or act in accordance with chapter 20 ethics and remove the part about the quorum and just say, members shall be in compliance with chapter 20 ethics of the code of the town of Willplata. How about that?
I can sleep at night with that.
Okay. This came, this language came from the code, this little piece here. So anyway, we'll, we'll fix that. Let me make a note of before we move on to the next.
Well, not to throw more, more mud in the water. Because at times we are privy and we talk about in particular in closed section confidential information and other discussions, should, should we have some kind of a confidentiality statement?
You know, we have a non, like an NDA, non-disclosure agreement. We have executed that once during our tenure, the previous four years. And it was to talk about candidates for the position of the vacancy for the town manager. But normally under, and Danielle, again, this is your wheelhouse, when we go into closed session, it is sacred, you can't say anything outside. I don't think we need an extra form that's understood. Anything in closed session is to stay and we can't talk about it. Danielle, thoughts?
Well, we do have the section on closed meetings.
Okay.
Let's see if we have something in there.
I'm not suggesting a, a form for each session. I just think maybe just a generalized statement, like you just said, Mayor, you know. I, I just think we just need to protect ourselves for in future council, that's all.
Yeah, that's not a bad idea. Right?
Madam Mayor, in most of the communities I've worked for did not require an NDA between council involving sort of confidential matters that may be discussed per the Closed Meeting Act, you know, but I think you are sort of ethically obligated to understand your responsibility and sort of the restrictions of talking about matters that have been discussed in closed session. So I think, you know, it's more of the ethical standard and now, you know, we do have an attorney on our council. So I don't want to get into putting Matt in a position to opine, but you know, I believe that, you know, and I've seen communities that have had to censure council members in the past because of talking about things that were maybe discussed in, in closed session. But, you know, unusual for an NDA, I would say for a council to enter an NDA regarding matters that were discussed in a closed session.
Maybe it's a matter of, you know, revising this section E. I mean, it does say individuals attending a closed set meeting.
Okay.
Shall respect the council's decision that the subject matter is too sensitive for public discussion. It should treat the closed meeting discussion as confidential. If you'd like any additional language or some revisions there that may address your concerns.
Okay. Danielle, I like that because that applies to us and applies to whoever's a part of it, right? So I think that's expansive rather than restrictive. I like that.
Instead of individuals, would it be appropriate to insert any individual?
Okay, yeah, that definitely clarifies it. Thank you.
Yeah, let me go to. I think that the, this was removed because we had the decorum up at the top.
Section two, six, two and six, three, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
I'm fine with the removal of that.
I mean, it's kind of redundant, at least from what I saw.
Yeah.
This pretty much mirrors, all except for this one section here that was inserted. The sample language pretty much mirrors how we do business. And, you know, pretty much matches what we have in code.
I didn't have any problems with that.
And this is, you know, the informal discussion. And then anyone can make a motion. That's all pretty standard. Okay. I guess in this particular jurisdiction, their standing committee reports and recommendations were part of the consent agenda. And were pretty much approved as one item. So that's why this language is in here, but I did remove it. Would have had to anyway, since you got rid of consent agenda items.
Yeah, a lot of standing committees would include three council members. So if you had three council members agreeable on an issue, then with a five-member board such as our own, if it came out of committee, then it would be considered to be approved.
Oh, wow.
Which is unusual, I would say, but you know, that's the way some stand. Actually, let me restate that. It would still take a vote of the full council, but it would not need a second. And a lot of the communities I worked, it would not require a second because there were three members of the council as part of a standing committee. Of course, all those meetings, because of the three members had to be, had to be public.
This here, the receipt of motions, this particular section is pretty much follows Robert's rules of order, which I think is what they were trying to do here. I would assume that this particular, the sample language came from an area that, you know, wanted to have some of those requirements as Robert's rules of order without being so restrictive. So basically this is pretty much standard as it stands today.
On section six dash eight, instead of debate, can we call it discussion? Or is that? It just kind of sets us out there. I like discussions.
That's completely
I thought I read that somewhere else. Doesn't the town code say debate?
I think maybe it does. That's the general term that's used. And basically the debate is just a discussion. Providing your opinion. You're trying to convince others to agree with your opinion.
All right. Well, we don't have to change it. I will just, because I never say, I say, we have a, a motion and it's been properly seconded. We have any discussion. I never say any debate. Maybe it's, maybe I have to change my language. Maybe that's it.
Well, I mean, we can change it throughout if you're more comfortable with the discussion opposed to debate. I can do it. Just make sure that all those references, wherever they may be, say discussion.
Let me see how this council does. They start debating, then we're changing it to discussion.
You have to have the votes to do that, though.
And that would be a debate. No.
Let's, let's debate that.
Yeah, that's fine. We can go, I, I can get over that one. Not a big deal, as long as it's in, it's in good spirit.
Okay. Method of voting. I don't think there were many changes in here. If you see anything that jumps out. But again, it's just kind of outlining the procedures is, would be done in Robert's rules of order. But this is the very, very, very much in brief version.
Yeah, that is a brief one. But it does outline what happens when there's a tie. It's a no vote, so.
Yeah. And then the participation by the remote electronic communication. I think that maybe we might want to change it just to conference call something or just leave it alone. But there are provisions in the Maryland Open Meetings Act that addresses this. Especially now. So I think that this is, I didn't see much that needed to be changed here, but if anything jumps out at you, then please let us know so we can make some edits.
I think the terminology, remote electronic communication is very vague so that it doesn't, again, make us do one type of, of remote interaction. So I'm fine with that.
I would just say that, you know, I think Danielle, you talked in another area about just referencing the state because as quickly as things are moving, as far as remote meetings in the pandemic, you know, every time the legislature goes in section, they could tweak this sort of, or this section of the state code. And then, yeah, we're, it would require us to sort of manage our bylaws more frequently, whereas if we just reference the state code, if there are changes to that, then the changes would be in turn, I guess, also changed within our, our documents. So I just concern myself with something that is so changing so frequently that if we adopt specific measures, that we may be having to manage those more frequently, whereas we just adopt you know, the Maryland Openset Meetings Act, and if it's specific provisions, it may be easier to do it that way.
I like that idea.
That's why, you know, the Maryland Open Meetings Act, the name of it will probably never change. So we're saying here, instead of, instead of referencing that code section like they did for this Virginia code.
Yeah.
I think some of this may need a little bit of work. I didn't spend a lot of time on it. I wasn't sure where the direction or what, what direction the council want to take this. I think this one, it may be a little restrictive on the, on how someone can participate electronically. So I think maybe a little bit more time needs to spent, be spent in this area. You know, for cases of emergency, if something happens, you can't come in, but you still can call in or get on your iPad or computer in attend.
And I do think it opens it up so that I know when we all try maybe take a vacation and if it happens to be, you know, instead of us all going on the first week of the month, because we have meetings, the second, third and fourth week of the month, then we, we are afforded the ability to Zoom or Teams or call in. And I know back in 2017, that wasn't the case, but the pandemic, I think, opened our eyes to that.
I think this one, though, it's requiring a physical quorum of the council to be assembled at one primary location. I think that's the sticking point for me is that let's say you need to establish a let's say you need to establish a quorum for whatever reason. And to establish that quorum, that person has to attend electronically, then this, you wouldn't be in compliance here.
Yeah.
Yeah, so let's, can we tweak that language?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take a look at it. I mean, if you're okay with offering this option for the town council, then certainly I can, you know, do a little more work on this. I really, honestly, I didn't dive into it much. Um, so let me see what section. I'll take a look at it, but if you see anything, if you have anything that pops out at you, send me an email or something to let me know to take a look at that area in particular. Um, moving on to boards, committees, commissions and authorities. I'm not sure if we have any appointments to authorities that may need to come out, but I think my thought was to not restrict things if that does come up at some point. This is pretty much how we do it now with the appointments to the boards and commissions. It's a vote before the town council. And standing committees of the council, that's another area that do you want them? Do you want the option? I put in here may um, to not box you in to be able to have that option. However, that option could also be added at a later date if you decide to add some standing committees.
I like having the option now. And may doesn't make us, so.
Yeah, I, I was just gonna say the same thing. I would concur. It gives the option. Future options.
I do see one other change that needs to be added here. If you want to keep this in here is that um, these topics, these committee topics would be to include but not limited to. Does that make sense?
It does. It gives us, again, flexibility.
Yep.
Okay. And this just outlines how you would create those committees. And they're established by ordinance, which I like that because it really would help to establish. Um, you know, outline how they function, what their purpose is, the composition.
I have no problem.
One could be done by resolution.
Yeah, right. I just saw that, right.
Yep, I think that's pretty clear.
Okay, this does, Brent, this does say that the town manager will issue a report with comments and recommendations regarding the creation of the committee. And, but you may delegate that responsibility to any department head.
Yeah.
That most important clause, yeah.
I know, I should have struck that before.
Yeah, I was gonna say, would you like me to take that one out?
I messed up on that one.
Thank you for taking one for the team, Danielle.
Oh, goodness. Again, with that other and thinking about all of this, this may need a little bit more refinement, kind of look at how it, now that we know that you're interested in keeping that flexibility, I think we'll take a look at it and see if there's, you know, some recommendations on if there are revisions needed. This is just pretty much how we do things now.
I found that section eight one very interesting. I'm thinking, when are we going to be political in nature? Since we're nonpartisan. Are they talking about an election? Well, if there's an election, we're not going to be inviting the the uh town staff in their official capacity. I just thought that was odd. Better not be being political.
Yeah. Maybe it's a matter of that happened to this particular community at some point and they had to address it. If you don't think that it's needed, we can remove it. Um, however, you're not doing it anyway, so outlining the fact that you're not doing it isn't a bad thing.
Okay.
It gets into chain of command and, you know, say, for example, Councilman Trolinger was having a ward meeting and he knew stormwater was going to be an issue. You know, Matt may want Bobby Stall to be present because, you know, Director of Operations would be the person best or most appropriate, whereas Matt knows that it would probably be for chain of command to work through me to see, check Bobby's availability, things of that nature is probably the reason this was established in whichever community it's it was, is utilized in. Because you do have issues. City of Richmond was famous, and I don't mean to throw City of Richmond to the bosses, your resident. But you had, it's a violation of the charter for staff members to give direct, or for, excuse me, for council members to give direct uh what, uh, direct uh
Direction.
Direction, direct directions. Or directive to a staff member. So that's why I think a lot of this is in place. So.
That's in our code as well.
Right.
The only one we can boss around is you.
Trust me, I'm well aware of that.
That was those other guys. That was never me.
I'm gonna go mute now.
Yeah. I, I mean, we can, we can keep that there. There's a reason why, obviously, but I just addressing political one way unless they change to be the, you know, a political parties.
Yeah, this is just statements to be included in the minutes. You know, the rest of it's pretty standard. What that means is if there's a specific point, our minutes are action minutes. Um, the statement would be if one of you felt the need that there needed to be that public statement included in there, something that you need to make sure that the public is fully aware of, um, then you would ask that in advance. Uh, and provide a written copy. In that way, that written copy can be attached to the minutes. Um, it would never be a good practice for someone to try to quote someone in the minutes. Um, so that written statement would be preferable if that need ever arises. Generally, that doesn't. So I don't think we have much of a concern there.
The remainder, sections eight, three, eight, six, um, I have no issue with.
Um, when we get down to the attachments, I don't think that there would be any attachments that would be part of this. Um, so I think all of those would be reviewed and obviously, as we go through and adopt ours, we would include this information on the last time it was updated, when it was approved, all of that. So those versions would be included.
Okay.
Oh, finally, there's my list of my comments. But we're not going back to them. I got beat up enough over ethics.
Darn.
Okay, so I'll, I'll work on the draft and with all the comments from this week and last week and, you know, then that way you can see it in context and you know, provide further comments and, you know, we can work towards a final version for adoption.
Fantastic. Let's put it on upcoming meetings. Already see how that's working? No, thank you for all your hard work. That was really awesome. And we did get a lot done. It's tedious work at best, but it needs to get done. So thank you for that. I appreciate that. All right, if Kevin is still awake there, I guess we're going on to uh, US Department of Treasury. And Kevin, you're round?
Yes, I am.
Fantastic. It's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Kevin Greenville, Town Treasurer. Tonight I have two brief items to discuss with you. The first one is authorizing the town to accept coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. The background on this topic is the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA of 2021, was signed into law on March 11th. Uh, the ARPA is a $1.9 trillion economic stimulus bill that is designed to aid the United States' recovery from the economic and health effects of the COVID-19 pandemic. Uh, within the bill is $350 billion that's allocated to eligible state, local, territorial and tribal governments. The funding amounts are as follows. Uh, that bottom one, nine, non entitlement units of local government is what the town of La Plata is, and the total amount allocated to those entities is nine point 19.5 billion dollars. Uh, states, counties and metropolitan cities have received their funding directly from the United States Treasury. NEUs, which is what La Plata is, will receive their funding through the Maryland state government. A hundred and forty-six of the 157 municipalities in Maryland are defined as a NEU. On Friday, June 4th, David Brinkley, Secretary of Budget and Management for the State of Maryland, released instructions on how to receive coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds. Uh, for us to accept funding and for any NEU, uh, we must complete an online application and sign the NEU award terms and conditions and assurances of compliance with civil rights requirements by the end of this month, June 30th. Uh, both documents are attached to this memorandum. The town of La Plata was initially projected to receive approximately $8 million in funding. However, this amount was based off an initial Community Development Block Grant, CDBG formula that no longer applies to NEUs. Funding allocations will be based on population size for the uh, non entitlement units. Currently, the Treasury presents only aggregate numbers at the state level for NEUs. And for the state of Maryland, that equates to $528 million. We will receive these funds in two tr- two tranches with 50% provided in the coming weeks and the remaining balance delivered 12 months after the first installment. Uh, one little caveat I want to bring to your attention is that the Single Audit Act requires all non-federal entities that expend more than $750,000 in federal awards in a year, they must obtain an audit in accordance with the Single Audit Act amendments of 1996. So if the town accepts these funds, the Single Audit Act threshold will potentially be surpassed for multiple fiscal years. Our current auditors, Cone Resnick, they can perform a single audit and they can do that in concurrence with the annual financial audit. And it's really a non-restrictive additional fee. Um, probably looking at maybe an additional $12,000 each year. Uh, Treasury has not made a final determination on the eligibility to use ARPA funds for the cost of a single audit. And just in conclusion, we're projected to receive a significant amount of funding under the ARPA. Uh, but first, I'm asking town council to legislatively authorize the acceptance of these funds. Uh, once we're approved and we receive an award validation from the state, we will bring this forward to council with further details on eligible usage of eligible uses of funds for a discussion. And I, I thank you for your time and attention to this matter.
Yes, please. Yes, I, I vote that we do get, uh, we are authorized to accept on our behalf the $8 million. And you know that I've already spent probably seven point whatever million on all of our visions. But I want to hear from council, does anybody have any uh, reason not to authorize uh, Kevin to accept the funding?
Goldsmith, anytime we get extra money, by all means do it.
All right.
Dave, you good?
Oh, yeah, this is uh, when the feds are giving you some money that we can use and we could certainly use it. We should take it, we should leverage that as much as we can. Thank you for doing this.
Evelyn?
No opposition here. Thank you, Mayor Mayor.
And Matt?
No, let's move forward. I agree.
All right, Kevin, anytime you want to comment and ask us to authorize you getting free money, we love that. So you have a consensus, all five of us. I bring you to part two.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, second agenda item I have for tonight is an update on service terminations and late charges on utility accounts. If you recall, at a council meeting on Tuesday, May 11th, um, I, I attached the memorandum to this document that we discussed at that council meeting on uh, May 11th. I just encourage, if you have time, uh, you know, to review it, um, because it overlaps with the information I'm presenting tonight. Um, per your direction at that council meeting, utility disconnections commenced on June 1st, 2021 on accounts that were over three months in arrears, and that is amounts owed on the service period ending December 31st, 2021 or before. Uh, no late charges were assessed on those utility counts, but 37 accounts in total were disconnected. Um, you can see the total accounts delinquent is still at 104 and the total amount delinquent is approximately $50,000. Uh, this is a significant improvement on where we were at on May 11th. Um, I think those numbers, we, we had over 1,000 accounts delinquent and almost $400,000 in total amount delinquent. We didn't, we still haven't, uh, we didn't enforce cutoffs for the service period ending March 31st, 2021. So that is why you see a number of accounts still delinquent. We're, we're considering those delinquent, but we did not proceed with service termination on, on those. Um, below is just a, a schedule of the utility billing for the remainder of the calendar year. And that's really, we're looking for direction tonight is on those to be decided for uh, the service period of April 1st, 21 through June 30th, 21, which is, we're going to get those bills out um, in, in early July is when the, the bills will be issued for the next service period. To assess late charges on utility accounts with our utility billing software, we have to know uh, now if we're gonna uh, assess late fees because that information is presented on the bill. So i- if you recall, on a, on a town utility bill, it has up in the corner um, what your, your interest is going to be if you don't pay uh, by the due date. So we really need to know before we get these bills out if you intend to uh, charge interest on, on uh, the next billing cycle. Um, the adopted FY 2022 budget, it includes approximately $75,000 in late payment charges as we anticipate a return to normalcy in the upcoming fiscal year in regards to utility bills. Uh, we really strive to set water and sewer rates based on the actual cost to deliver services. Late payment charges are included in our rate calculations. There is no avenue to recoup some of this lost revenue through the American Rescue Plan Act. Uh, recruitment of revenue in the ARPA is only for general fund revenue. So the sus- suspension of late charges will eventually have an impact on rates and our enterprise funds. Uh, several Maryland utilities have commenced service terminations and are assessing late charges. Charles County began assessing late charges at the end of April and began water disconnections in early May. And I, I think the town is really, we've taken a proactive response to the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic on residents and businesses. Uh, myself and my staff, we recommend, recommend a return to normalcy in regards to utility disconnections and late charges. And that would be uh, charging late fees for the upcoming billing and also, you know, sort of getting back into service disconnections uh, on all accounts, sort of our, our normal process. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on this.
Kevin, um, first of all, I applaud you and your team there for everything that you have done. We have, or your team has gone above and uh, beyond making sure that every resident who is uh, that reaches out to you is able to um, get on a payment plan. I do think that we should, in my opinion, and I will definitely hear from those, I see hands raised now. Um, in my opinion, that we should go back to normalcy and, and start with the um, the late fees and the disconnection. Um, Evelyn, I see your hand raised.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Kevin. I appreciate the information. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Kevin. I appreciate the information that you provided. I just have two questions. So am I reading this correctly? When I look at utility account information as of May 10th, 2021, there were 1,000 accounts delinquent, and then as of June 10th, 2021, there were only 104 delinquent? Did they pay up? I mean, how is that?
Well, Councilwoman Bryant Ward, I think it's two things. That May 10th was, I think, a week before bills were due, and we see a significant amount of utility payments right before the due date. So that's one of the factors. I think the other factor is, you know, we've allowed, you know, payment plans, and we haven't shut off water to any accounts before March of this year, and no late charges. I think people have become complacent paying their bills. So, you know, when we did announce that water shut offs would start, and, you know, I think it contributed to a lot more people paying. So those numbers are accurate. I would say those are the two primary reasons for that, you know, most 900 accounts becoming non-delinquent.
Okay, excellent. And so when you talk about collecting, enforcing late fees, the late fees would be effective as of what date?
So the, we are, we charge two late fees. We charge a late fee when bills go out on past due balances, and then we'll charge interest on, you know, those accounts that are delinquent. And that's what you see on your bill. So we're not recommending doing an APR charge on the balances as of June 30th. We're recommending doing our typical late fee that will be after the due date, and that's what's shown on your bill.
Okay, that's excellent. I am definitely in favor of that. So thank you for answering me.
You're welcome.
Matt, I see your hand raised as well.
You mentioned payment plans. People would still be able to reach out and start payments, correct?
Councilman Challenger, we, you were allowed to do the governor's order to halt utility terminations. That expired in September of last year. The Public Service Commission, they put out guidelines. We don't fall under them, but they put out guidelines that we followed pretty much to what they said, word for word. We set up payment plans then. So any balance as of 9020 could be spread out over the next four bills. Those payment plans are still in effect, but we're not allowing payment plans set up past that date. So if somebody called in today with, you know, needing a payment plan on an account, we would go back to that 930 balance. But we're not, we're not, unless Council wishes us to do that, we're not extending that out further.
Thanks.
And I agree with not extending it out further, just because we had had that long discussion on that. Dave, do you have something, or Jim?
Yeah, well, just two, I mean, unfortunately, I do think we probably have to go back to the normal course of business. But I would also add that I think the material that's on the website where folks can go get help is also helpful as well. That list of resources that's on the town website. So that's a good idea, and we should always try to do that. Thank you.
Plus it's front and center. That is great. Jim, do you have something?
No, I think we have to go back to normal at this point in time. The governor just made an announcement today that, I think, effective 1 July, all operations are normal.
Good deal. All right. So Kevin, it sounds like you have the consensus that we are getting back to normal there.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, brings us to Sustainable Maryland Action Plan and Green Purchasing Policy.
Yes, this is Danielle again. You're probably tired of hearing from me. This particular one, I'm, this isn't going to be a full presentation. This is more just to kind of let you know that this is being worked on. This is part of the application for, to become a sustainable Maryland community. This Green Team Action Plan was kind of developed, it was developed by the Green Team, but also developed by staff based on discussions. We are just about there with our application and the requirements. The, actually, we're over. We do have, it requires 150 points, and with everything that's included on here, we're at 2:30. We've been a little busy.
Love it.
So basically, with this, the action plan itself are items that are intended to move forward in specific years. Some of these have been identified. Some of these are projects that have already been in the works. You know, public art is one of those. The Buy Local, it was easy to kind of shift the activities that are going on through the farmer's market and the La Plata Business Association, the town, and kind of identify those as a program. So I wanted to give the Town Council, you know, the opportunity to see this, provide any preliminary comments you may have, and, you know, hear if you have anything that you'd like to see added to this, either in this first year or years moving forward. And also, to extend an invitation, if you want to participate on the Green Team, there certainly is always the opportunity to collaborate with our committees. One other item to note is we are looking for ways, and there is a draft ordinance that will be coming up in the near future to kind of codify Keep La Plata Beautiful and these various work groups that we have in place. So that will be coming forward soon. So I'd like to hear from the Town Council if you have any questions on this.
I love what you're doing to become, or your team is, the Green Team is doing to become a sustainable city. And it is, it's just exciting to me to be involved in this, and the Keep La Plata Beautiful, and Bee City, Tree City, Bird City, all of that. So fantastic. You know, I want to become a Heel City too, so that's just, I'm just going to slide that one in. We'll try to do something with that. But all of this is so exciting for our town, and you're doing a fantastic job. I am surprised that, I love, first of all, that there's a three-year plan out there. I would love to do it all in about three months, but you know, that's who I am. So it's good to see it on paper. So thank you so much for that. I have nothing else. Council?
Mayor, this is Dave Jenkins. I would also echo what you just said. I think this is a great thing for the town. I applaud the staff for taking the initiative, and I think this provides, well, can provide us with a dashboard so we can track our progress. I'm a little partial to the Complete Streets item that was added in year two. In fact, I think I sent something to Ms. Phipps and Ms. Manley earlier tonight about, I have a lot of familiarity with Complete Streets, so I'm glad to see that's there, and that frankly folds into our comprehensive plan. It folds into our ideal of having a walkable La Plata. One other just brief comment, I think there was a section that talks about a watershed and incorporation of that. I think perhaps an organization to think about is the Port Tobacco River Conservancy, since most of the town is in that watershed, and perhaps they would be interested in participating in that. And full disclosure, I'm a board member as of this past January with the Port Tobacco River Conservancy, and they have had great things to say about La Plata and how they've worked with the town staff very, very well. So again, I would just applaud this effort and continue the good work. And yes, I'd like to participate.
Okay, we would welcome that. I did see, we did miss this, that on this form, we are, you know, partners with Port Tobacco River Conservancy.
Great.
Southern Maryland Audubon Society, we, you know, welcome them with open arms. They're happy that they're able to work with the town to move their projects forward. One thing I can say is that Kelly Phipps has done a phenomenal job with putting all of this together. We really couldn't have done it without her, our Green Team. They have a lot to bring to the table. They're very involved. They want to be out there educating the community on various projects and environmental issues. So we are very lucky to have this moving on, and we look forward to, the more participation we can get, the better. The one outstanding item is, and it's more of an internal document, we kind of have discussed this with the Green Purchasing Policy. It's a little odd with how it's written, but it's a requirement, and I think it would be fairly easy to implement because it basically does say that we will make the best effort to purchase in a sustainable way. So staff did look at it. I didn't really receive any comments, although the concern with how it would affect the wastewater treatment plant with those needed products that are used there. However, again, it does take into consideration that we will make best efforts. I have no doubt that, you know, with Bobby, if there was a product that would work just as well, that was, you know, more sustainable, he would use it. So he uses what has to get the job done.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions on this document? Okay.
Is this, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Matt.
Matt Challenger, yep. So is this the, is this related to the Keep La Plata Green, or is this just a separate item that we're trying to make sure everybody knows that we want to, we want to try to make things a priority that are environmentally friendly?
They're somewhat, they're all tied together. Keep La Plata Beautiful is serving as an umbrella for a lot of these other initiatives. We have the, we had expressed interest. The Town Council adopted a resolution to enter into the program to become a sustainable Maryland community. And so the green portion of Clean, Green, and Beautiful became our Green Team. And so that's how it evolved over time. They have a special interest in those green items, and they did take the training that Sustainable Maryland offers to be that Green Team. We'll probably formalize it a little more as we kind of work through things and navigate this whole program, see how best it can be organized. But yeah, so they, right now, there are four members on the Green Team, and we could definitely, and then there's two staff people that work with them, myself and Kelly Phipps. And so we certainly welcome, you know, others. We do bring in some staff members that can contribute to different projects. We try not to burden too many staff members with regular meetings unless they're needed there for other items. So we look forward to the Town Council's participation in this. And if you come across, as you're in the community, some, a project that you think the Green Team would want to look at, please forward it, and we'll see what we can do with it.
I'm sorry. I love that. I think it's great. I was just curious about the sustainable procurement policy part.
Sorry.
Is that, no, that's okay. I didn't, I didn't word it well. So is that directly part of this? Is that required? Is this just us making it know what our priorities are?
It is one of the required items that's in here. There are certain things that, you know, are non-negotiable. Most of these are negotiable, but that is definitely one. The policy has to be done, or you can't qualify.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
Danielle, when do you think that we would actually receive the designation of becoming a sustainable city? Do we have to wait the full three years, or is it the action plan that we can start, and we just have to make sure that we implement that?
We would apply for, to be certified by June 30th. And then that decision is made closer to October. Generally, it's in October when those would be approved. And we, so we would know at that time. But the action plan is a three-year plan. It's not, we complete the action plan to be certified. And it looks like Jean Harrington has her hand raised.
Oh, go ahead. I'm not paying any attention to that. Janine, do you have something to add?
So I was just going to mention that along with the great work, and actually, when Kelly Phipps sent around this kind of Green Team Action Plan and asked for input, I think it's going to be important to make sure that we accommodate or include any kind of changes into our actual codes as well, where it's feasible. So for example, the Complete Streets, I think that needs to be incorporated into our Chapter 170. So as I'm revising that, and of course, that's kind of been put on the back burner right now, which Danielle and I have been trying to get back together to meet on that, hasn't happened yet. But looking at incorporating some of the aspects of Complete Streets into the town code, of course, we have the resource protection standards that are going to be coming back to you fairly quickly. So anywhere that we can kind of make sure that some of this is codified, I think that's going to be especially important as well, just to make sure that we are enforcing those and we have a mechanism to enforce those. If they're not codified, and they're just kind of policy hanging out there, it's great. And we can say we would prefer to have this, which is kind of what I'm doing right now with our subdivisions. We haven't adopted the code yet, but we want native plantings. We don't have anywhere in our code that really specifies you must plant native. So I, when I'm reviewing a subdivision now and working with Laura Lyon, our planner too, we're specifically saying, we want you to put native plantings. We want native street trees. We want native in our stormwater management facilities. And I haven't gotten any pushback yet, so that's been great. But if they did push back, there's not much I can do at this point. So I think that'll be very important. And of course, those codes will be coming for the Town Council. And if anyone has any suggestions based on this Green Team Action Plan of anywhere that you'd like to see changes, I think that would be important to bring up. I think our property maintenance code, we've seen several places where, I think within there, if you have a certified natural habitat area, code enforcement cannot force you to cut your lawn or cut, you know, cut anything in there. But I think that that needs to be strengthened a little bit, that we want native, natural, certified habitats, and not just anyone, you know, that has a field with grass in it. I think we need to make sure that those are looked at as well, especially under the property maintenance code, because we do want to encourage natural habitats and planting native and not having everyone have to mow their lawn. I know that there's a law, and I don't know much about it, I just saw something on Facebook, about natural habitats and HOAs not being able to stop people from having native lawns and having to mow their lawn every week. So that's something to take in mind as well, that there's several areas in our code that these Green Team Action Plan ideas can be applied to. So as you hear from constituents, or you're looking through the code yourself, or if you have questions, please reach out and let us know, and that way we can take a look at the code and see if anything needs to be updated in there as well.
Thank you for that. Jim, I see that you have your hand up.
Just a quick thing. I think it's a great initiative, and it's nice to see that we're able to take the lead on this for the rest of the business community as well.
Fantastic. All right, Danielle, are you good? Do we need to do any, I mean, do you have directions? Do we need to give you any type of direction except for big encouragement and yay, go? Go, team, go?
Yeah, consensus to move forward and to introduce and consider for adoption, the resolution on June 22nd would be fantastic. Yeah, consensus to move forward and to introduce and consider for adoption, the resolution on June 22nd would be fantastic.
Oh, yeah. 100% for me. How about, uh, Councilman, um, uh, Goldsmith?
Yeah, I'll do 100% too.
Councilman Challenger?
Yes, I fully support it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yes, I'm in support of it.
And Councilman Jenkins?
Good to go. Go forward.
There we go. Go team, go. Go green team, go. All right. Oh, I'm very sad. This comes to the last agenda. All right, truck purchase memo. Is that, uh, Bobby?
It is me.
Hi.
Karen Council, thank you. Uh, we've had, uh, quite a few changes because of COVID. Um, we, we have, uh, I, I, I had a hundred thousand dollars in the budget this year for purchasing vehicles and I, um, as some of you know, uh, in operations, we actually have a vehicle reserve fund where we pre-fund all of our purchases for vehicles. And, um, we normally buy the vehicles out of that vehicle reserve and I had a hundred thousand dollars in the budget. We were fairly conservative this year and only spent about $12,000, uh, dollars out of that fund um, towards vehicle purchases. But we do have a challenge right now down at the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, sludge production down at the wastewater treatment plant due to everyone staying home has really increased. And we're now, where before COVID, we were producing between 120 and 150 tons a month. We're now producing anywhere from 180 to 200 plus per month. And so we have had to extend a second shift, uh, during most month, uh, excuse me, during most weeks to press sludge from seven in the morning till 11 at night. And in doing that, we're filling trailers more often. And so it has been challenging in trying to get the trailers ordered in, um, to where we could get them shifted around. And so I negotiated a deal with Duffield Hauling to stage a second trailer there at our facility. And what we'd like to do is use the old tractor that we have currently, which is a 1973 International. And, uh, so it is 40 plus years old. Almost 50 years old. And, um, we would like to bring that down to the wastewater treatment plant and use it to jockey the trailers in and out so that we could then call Duffield. Um, we would have an, an empty trailer sitting there. We could go ahead and start filling the empty trailer and use that tractor off-road now. We do feel like it's reasonably, um, uh, uh, not as road safe. It's, it's certainly road safe, but it, it's not as road safe because of its age. It is 50 years old. And so, um, we, uh, would like to now purchase a second tractor. And so I had tasked DR Cox with taking a look, uh, around to see what we could find on the used market. I will tell you that I generally, on most of our bigger trucks, like to purchase used. And the reason for that is because, you know, to be honest, the town is, is fairly small. And so we don't generally put a lot of mileage on trucks that we don't use every day, like pickup trucks or things like that, the bigger trucks. We just don't put a lot of mileage on them. So we can go out and find a good deal on a truck. Um, and, you know, when we do that, it's certainly worthwhile doing. It doesn't generally comply with what our procurement documents say, where we go out and take out public bids and that kind of thing. We actually have to go out and find something and, uh, you know, find one that we feel is a good deal for the town of La Plata. In this case, I tasked DR Cox, our, um, Assistant Director for Maintenance. And, uh, I think DR is on here with us. DR, are you still here?
I am.
Um, if you might describe what you found as far as the truck is concerned and what your recommendation would be, I think that would be helpful.
Sure. Uh, I was able to locate a local truck. It's, uh, down in the Thompson Corner Road area on 234. Um, a local man owns it. Uh, it's a 2013 Caterpillar. Um, it only has 119,000 miles on it, which may sound like a lot, but in the big truck world, that is virtually nothing. Um, you know, these trucks, uh, that I've been looking at, um, older ones with four to five, 600,000 miles on them are anywhere in the neighborhood of 50 to $60,000. And, uh, I negotiated this man down to 42,000 on this truck and I've taken a look at it twice now, driven it. It is very well taken care of, looks practically brand new. Um, and I would like to reiterate what Bobby said and, uh, take the old truck of ours off the road, um, mainly due to, like he said, safety points. Um, uh, but it would still work perfectly fine for us as a yard jockey truck. It has a, you know, a, a perfect role for the town doing that. Um, so I would highly recommend that we make this purchase and I think it would serve us well for many years to come.
Thank you for that. Uh, and I know you all, Bobby, you always had tried to get the best, um, price. And you haven't disappointed us yet. Uh, I have no problems, uh, especially after hearing about the truck and its condition and all that. And safety is number one uh, for, for our town employees. So, um, I have no problems with that, moving forward with that. Does council have any questions or, or statements that they would like?
It's a good deal for the town of La Plata and I highly recommend it.
Good deal. Dave, Matt or Evelyn, anything?
Uh, go ahead, Evelyn, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I, I spoke with, um, Director Stahl about this last week and I have no problems with it.
Excellent.
And, you know, just to add it, it's, again, it seems like, um, this is a win-win in that we're getting something that's off the road and uh, giving us some flexibility to use something that's a pretty good deal. So I, I, I don't have any problem with it at all.
And Matt, anything?
Nope. I support it. Thanks, Bobby.
All right. Thank you all very much. I appreciate the opportunity and we'll bring it next week for vote. Thank you.
And thank you for hanging out with us all evening. Appreciate it.
Enjoyed it.
All right. That brings us to Matters of Information Agreement Finalization to Begin the Dorchester Community Center Master Plan Process. What do we have there? Is that the chief?
No.
The chief is gone. Don't put me on here.
The chief's here, but, uh, I think this is Danielle's.
Good. Um, this particular agreement, uh, was approved by resolution of the town council to enter into the agreement. Uh, we've, Brent and I worked with the members of the Neighborhood Design Center, uh, to, you know, get that agreement in place. They, we, Brent just signed it. It's ready to go. Um, we're going to begin the process and the community, start working on the community input sessions um, to move that forward. And so look, be on the lookout for that, um, invitations to participate as you continue your discussion items with the neighbors in the Kent Avenue corridor and other areas of the town. You know, please make sure that they're aware of this process. We want as much input from the community as possible so that the community members can help design a, sort of the grounds and the facility that will serve their needs.
And that's an exciting time. I, and thank you and thanks to the chief. And, and I just have to laugh because council, I know, doesn't know this, but I think maybe it was August of 2018, I said, we're going to do this and I'd like it completed by January 1st, 2019. So here we are. It takes, it's a process. So it's, it takes some time, but you guys are doing a fabulous job on that. So I look forward to seeing that.
Well, just so the town council is aware, and I'm sure you are, and just for any community members that may be on this, uh, call that, you know, we did, uh, the town was awarded $250,000 from the state of Maryland to help build the shell of the facility. Um, during the discussions with the Dorchester Community Center Group, um, the, the need was established to think of the site as a whole, so that when, you know, we didn't just plop a building down and then think about the comprehensive, the master plan of how the facility, the whole site could be used at a later date. So, you know, this, this will help so that, you know, we can do things in phases as funding allows. But it will also, um, you know, give the community the opportunity to design their community center.
I think that's important. Thank you for that. All right. Moving on to future work session topics.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Town Council, you see strategic planning there. And I think, uh, you know, we've had several conversations with several of the council and uh, one of the things we talked about is just sort of briefing, uh, our current council on sort of this strategy that our, uh, past council had sort of established and adopt, uh, adopted to make you, you know, familiarize yourself with sort of what the, uh, past council's goal was, goals were, I should say. And then, you know, sort of morph that in. I know I talked with, uh, Councilman Jenkins about, you know, I think that there could be a benefit. We have a lot of plans and maybe reconciling some of the actionable items out of all of our plans. And some of them will overlap, uh, sort of trying to, so get our, our heads wrapped around, uh, many of the documents that we have outstanding. And some of those actionable plans, the council may decide, you know, that, that's no longer a priority. And, you know, we sort of need to reprioritize some of the, uh, various, uh, things we have out there, uh, as another activity. And then of course, you know, then establishing sort of a, uh, a strategic plan for this council. Uh, and, you know, I talked to Councilman Brian Ward about the idea of maybe, and in the past years, we have not done a community survey, maybe, uh, looking at a community survey, trying to get input from the public, uh, taking the reconciliation of all these different plans and actionable items and the previous work done by the past council, uh, taking all that into consideration and then maybe establishing a strategic plan for this council uh, with the prioritized actionable items, uh, that then staff can move out and, uh, go to uh, implementing the sort of vision of council. So that's, that's a long-winded answer uh, to the question or just the smear statement of strategic planning and strategic plannings of a million things to a million people. But that's sort of what I have envisioned as sort of where, how and how we move forward, uh, with this new council. And I've, of course, I've obviously, as always, it's open to discussion whether tonight, but, or a future work session. Uh, but I anticipate coming back to council on maybe as soon as next month, first meeting, just to give you a brief overview of sort of where the town is now as far as the strategic plan goes. As I stated, it had been previously endorsed and adopted by the prior council. So.
Excellent. All right. All right. Uh, let's go to public forum. If anybody would like to speak this evening, I ask you to state your name, your address, whether you're in the Incorporated Town Limits, and please try to limit your, uh, statements to three minutes. Do I have anybody who would like to speak this evening?
Uh, yeah.
Go ahead.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Uh, I actually have three items. First one is just a comment. Whoever is responsible for having the trees on Heritage Green Parkway trimmed, long overdue, kudos to whoever it was, well needed. Between that and the efforts of Sandy Latimer for picking up all the litter and garbage on that road, which is substantial. It really improves the, uh, entrance to our town. So, uh, that's, that's one, number one. Number two, at the last meeting, you indicated that there was some good news on the purchase of water from WSSC. I'd like to hear what that good news is tonight. And the third item, and maybe Mr. Stahl can comment on this. I'd like the update on the stormwater sewer at 119 Morris. I was under the impression the last time I brought this up, it was going to be done the next week. I saw them cut down a tree in the ponding area close by. And I think Miss Utility came by to paint some of the storm sewers, but that's all I've seen. That's the three items, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Uh, and I know Ms. Latimer is doing an awesome job on, um, keeping that area clean. We are making progress. The good news was we are making progress on, uh, the water appropriation. And, um, I think that, uh, that I'm at liberty to, to give the details as of yet, but it is moving in a positive direction. And, uh, Mr. Stahl, you can take the last one.
Okay, Mayor. Um, first of all, uh, Mr. Ron Foller, we are working on that. Um, as again, um, where, uh, when things happen, we have to change priorities around. As you may not be aware, we had a major collapse in with respect, uh, to the stormwater pipe down at Centennial at 301 the other night. Um, and so we are, we have shifted some of our focus down there because of the, uh, the challenges with that and trying to coordinate with the state highway administration. As with everything, um, our guys were, uh, are going to do that project ourselves up there. And of course, um, with different things that have happened, it's gotten reprioritized. But, um, we will be working on that. We had to order a few parts for it and we will get to it. Um, as with all of this, um, you know, I have to set priorities accordingly as to how I do. I have a very limited staff on what we have to do and the same staff that repairs water lines and sewer lines also repairs, uh, stormwater lines and that kind of thing. Um, I will say with the tree trimming, uh, along there, um, we decided to go ahead and get RealTree to come in there and do that because we just didn't have the manpower uh, to be able to, uh, go in there and do the tree trimming. So we did get RealTree. They had given us a price that was acceptable and we used RealTree to go in there and do, uh, that project. We're doing a lot more of that. We're doing a lot more outsourcing. And so, um, uh, you know, we use that where we can. Uh, we do hope to get this, uh, the stormwater pipe over there, um, uh, fixed, uh, as soon as we can in the next few weeks. Um, but as I say, it, it's just a matter of, uh, you know, being able to prioritize it in. There are numerous, um, challenges with, you know, throughout the town. There are, in every single neighborhood, there are, um, there are challenges. And, you know, uh, I know this one is hot on Mr. Ron Foller's list, but it is one where, um, you know, a, as the council is aware, there are numerous stormwater projects throughout every single neighborhood in town. And I have to prioritize all of the projects, not just the ones that Mr. Ron Foller brings to my attention. And so it is a, it is a challenge. Uh, with respect, I also wanted to, uh, mention with respect to the last issue with regard to water appropriation. Um, we are working on numerous issues, not just a purchase from WSSC. There are numerous aspects of water appropriation. It has always been a challenge in the town of La Plata. Um, we do not, we are not out of water, as I think was said at the last meeting. Um, we are not imminently having to purchase water from, uh, WSSC. We still have uh, over a thousand EDUs left that we could build with the existing appropriation. So there is existing water left in La Plata's, um, uh, appropriation. So there is existing water left in La Plata's appropriation permit. And so we are not up against a wall. But of course, we are trying to be very, very proactive and start working on the problem way in advance. At one time in the town, we felt very comfortable that we had more than 10 years to grow without needing additional water. Of course, now that Heritage Green has started, it is a situation where we are needing to work on that more diligently at this time because the amount of time before we utilize over those 1,000-plus units is getting narrower because more development is occurring. So we're working on that. There are just numerous, WSSC is one option. It would be purchased through Charles County. We do not connect to WSSC. But that's just one of the options we're considering for possible additional water for La Plata.
Thank you, Bobby.
Sure.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? All right. Thank you all. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make that motion, Mayor. Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I have a second the most.
Oh, there's a lot of enthusiasm there. Before I say all in favor, you guys rallied again. So I promised, look, it went from six hours to four hours. We're getting there, guys. We're getting there. All in favor of calling it a night, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Council, for a fantastic meeting and staff as well. You all have a great night.
Thank you, staff. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you all.